I now call order this school board independent school district six twenty four to order. Roll call, will the clerk please call the roll?
Strife Oji?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Arcan?
Here.
Daniels here, Ellison?
Here.
Scar?
Here.
Please stand if you have a hat, take your hat off.
Pledge allegiance.
Give me a minute.
I got it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have before us an agenda, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Thompson, can I get a second?
Second.
Let's try it, Oji? Is there any discussion? This will be a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion passes. We also have before us a consent agenda, this contains a variety of business items that come monthly, including donations. We are truly grateful for all the support shown every month by our staff, for our staff and students. So we want to thank everybody that's contributed. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, right. Daniels, can I get a second?
Second.
By Thompson. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote, will the clerk please call the roll?
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcan?
Aye.
Daniels, aye. Ellison?
Aye.
Scar?
Okay, now we're to the public forum part of our agenda, we had zero people requests, so we will not be doing that. We're going on to our informational items, C1, Dr. Kazmicek with student recognition.
Right, thank you Chair Arcan, members of the board. Tonight we proudly celebrate the achievements of members of the high school speech team and middle school students who participated in history day. Congratulations to each and every one of you for state and national level accomplishments. We also extend our sincere gratitude to the dedicated staff and supportive family members who played a vital role in these successes. In recognition of their accomplishments, students have received a certificate and a bear pin, plus a letter acknowledging their achievements was mailed to their home. Now, please join us in watching a video highlighting their accomplishments. Go Bears!
Alright, congratulations to all those in there, I know a lot of hard work into it. We're gonna go on to information items C2, recognition of student liaison. Dr. Kazmicek?
Thank you Chair Arcan, members of the board. So on behalf of the White Bear Lake area school board, I want to commend and recognize Lydia Kleinhans, our 12th grade student, and then Thomas Reese, Thomas is here tonight. He's our junior representative for their outstanding roles as the 24, 25 student representatives to the school board, so thank you. I have a gift for you. So next year, Thomas will be sitting up here with us as we're expanding the upfront, so there's a little more room. He'll be joining us upfront, so thank you Thomas for your regular attendance.
Thank you. We're now on to C3, super tennis report. Once again, Dr. Kazmicek.
Alright, thank you Chair Arcan, members of the board. Congratulations to Mariner Middle School Language Arts Teacher Carla Triggs, who was named the White Bear Lake Area Educators 2025 Teacher of the Year at a recent recognition ceremony. Also, congratulations to the other finalists and to all those who were nominated this year. Willow Lane Elementary 5th graders are taking over local restaurant Donatelli's in White Bear Lake, working as the cooks, servers, and hosts over the lunch hour. Students will be there from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. again on May 13th and May 20th. Tomorrow's May 13th visit will be an extra special one, as Gabe Kessel, a White Bear High School student and former wrestler, who is fighting a rare and aggressive form of brain cancer, will be there with his family. The students have chosen to donate their Donatelli's tips to Gabe's treatment. This is a full circle moment. When Gabe was in 5th grade at Willow, he worked a shift during the restaurant takeover. And we confirmed, I had to make sure, Gabe is the student second from the left. So he'll be there tomorrow, so tomorrow might be a great day to go and support that project. Alright, the high school varsity baseball team has an exciting game on the calendar next week. Not only will it, not only will they be taking on our rival to the west, Moundsview High School, on Wednesday, May 21st, they will be doing so at Target Field. Tickets can be purchased either through a high school baseball player or coach, or you can find more information as a news item on the district's website. And as the school year comes to a close, a variety of end of the year student celebrations are taking place throughout the district before the last day of school on June 6th. I'd like to offer a special congratulations to those who are reaching important milestones, whether it's graduating from high school, middle school, elementary school, kindergarten, or preschool. I'm excited to celebrate our area learning center graduates on June 4th, and our White Bear Lake area high school graduates on June 5th in new commencement spaces. The high school's Performing Arts Center will house the ALC graduation, and the White Bear Lake area high school commencement ceremony will take place outside at the high school stadium. So enjoy the last days of the school year and have a safe and relaxing summer.
Alright, thank you very much.
Yes.
Alright, we're down to discussion items number one, we're gonna talk about graduation rate and student attendance update. Dr. Gillespie?
Hello, Chair Arcan, members of the board. Thank you for having me tonight, I will have some guests join me in just a little bit as part of a panel discussion, so I'll let you guys know when to come up. Tonight, I really want to take time to talk to you about graduation and student attendance data, and really look at, in the context of celebrations and where we are, what's the context around that data? And then as we continue to get better, where are the areas that we have to get better? And are continually diving into that. Again, I talk about graduation and attendance data, clarify some of the key metrics. These are metrics that get talked about across the state, and so making sure that people understand what they mean and why they matter, and then again, highlight what's working and where we're growing. So as you may have seen, our graduation rate for the class of 24 was just released this past week. Our district rate for the class of 24 is 91.6%. And we really break that down in three schools that we have. We have our high school, which is 96.5%, our area learning center, which is 77.5%, and then our transition education center, which that, that data was, we have it internally, but it's too small in terms of the number of graduates to report publicly. And so those three factor into what our, our school district rates are, which we are happy that it has increased and that we continue to be competitive with the state. I think it's really important to note we get compared, which I understand completely why we would, with, with school districts across our area. And we, not all school districts offer the same programming that we do. So we're really proud of our area learning center, we're really proud of our transition education center, but that isn't the case in all districts, especially our neighbors closest to us. And there are friends and colleagues, but Matamidi really doesn't have those programs. They use those programs with 916, where we have our own, and we also partner with 916, as you know. Our high school rate is 96.5%, which really keeps us very competitive. We're the second highest in the area high schools, and we're really proud of that. Everyone should be proud. But that, the ninth grade year for these students was 2021, the school year, and so that was an interrupted school year for them. And really, we worked really hard to make sure we could get as many students to cross the stage as possible, and really make sure that they felt prepared for their next steps, whatever that might be. So celebrations, if we look at specifically the high schools graduating class, last year there was 488 students. Seventeen of them were non-graduates, but 11 of those 17 had already planned with their teams that they would go on to our 18 to 22-year-old programming. And so when you look at 11 of those 17 graduating according to plan, what we planned for them and their teams, that's a graduation rate of 98.8%, and really something to be very, very proud of. The other piece is looking at our area learning center, many of the students that go there, one of the reasons that they go is they have had some sort of blip on the screen in terms of completing credits, and so many are credit deficient when they're referred there. And our area learning center at 77.5% is one of the highest, and it really sets out compared to others that are more traditionally around 50%, which again, not to be critical of them, because that is a program that we provide for our students, but the fact that we're still getting our students to graduate in that four-year rate speaks a lot to the program and the staff and what they're doing. The other piece that we keep looking in and getting better, and really my commitment to you and our commitment, is to continue to think about what other evidence do we have in terms of how our students are doing academically as we couple that with graduation. And one of the data that we have, which is lagging, and so some of this can be kind of frustrating sometimes in terms of how we impact our system, is from the sleds data, and I linked the website there, but they track the percent of high school students needing to take developmental coursework in Minnesota colleges during their first two fall terms. And you may, or may not be familiar, but when students take developmental coursework, they have to pay for it, but those credits don't then impact whatever they might be studying. And so for the class of 2018, 19% of our students who enrolled in Minnesota colleges needed to take developmental coursework. And the most recent data that we have right now is the class of 23, and that's down to 9%. And again, it's been a focus, as you know, we've talked with you at the board, but we continue to think about how do we make sure students have the skills necessary so they're successful beyond their time with us. So who are the 52 students that didn't graduate? We have, that's across the district, we have 21 students who are currently enrolled with us, seven who've graduated since the cutoff, and the cutoff for the Minnesota Department of Education is September 15th after the June that you would call four-year graduation. And so we're diving in, there's a few that we're asking MDE just to look at for us, because we believe we reported them as graduates within that timeframe, but five of them for sure graduated after September 15th. Then we have 22 students that we're really looking at, where might they be and what happened? And so some in our system, our seven students are designated as a 15-day drop, meaning they didn't attend school 15 consecutive days, and then we have to drop them from our enrollment. Two transferred to other schools, and 15 are for unknown reasons, so I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about those 15 as well. I think it's important to note that a student, when they leave us, them graduating or not graduating counts against the district or the high school where they were there the most time. So you'll see, I'm gonna click on a chart in a second, we had a couple students leave us in 10th grade. Well, that might mean that those two solid years were the longest that they were enrolled in one high school, and so then that comes back to us. So that's one of the reasons that graduation data is lagging, is all the different calculations that they need to do with districts, making sure their data is correct, and then also at the Department of Education. So as we continue to think about, it's gonna take me a little bit here. Again, we had 52 that have not yet graduated, that's, that's 8.4%. And so I wanted to really look at, what do we know so far about their stories? And we're still diving in, our ALC leadership team and our high school leadership team are really working with me. But of that, what student groups do these students fall into? How long were they with us? What might we find out about the students? And so we, of the 52 students, four students are multilingual learners, three students, excuse me, 36 students qualify for educational benefits, or what we used to call students and families who qualify for free and reduced lunch. 19 students who receive special education. Then you'll see the different ethnicity and race groups that each student falls into. Then, as you think about, okay, 52 students, 21 again are currently enrolled with us, seven have graduated, and then that unknown category with two that we know transferred to another school district. We have 22 that we're still trying to figure out, what can we do? It's still not too late to have them come and take part in our classes to get their diplomas. And so really, right now, what, what we know, and I'm, like I said, it literally is hour by hour, we're diving into it as we got this data last week. 10th graders, some, four of them left us in 10th grade, seven of them left us in 11th grade, and then 12, or excuse me, 11 of them left us in 12th grade. About 16 of the 22 have been enrolled with us and came to us as, as middle school students. And so that's one of the areas I'll talk about at the very end. But diving into, how do we support students who are new to our system in 6th grade, or even at the high school, to make sure that they graduate and feel part of our system? And then if you look at the credits earned, a total credit right now is our current schedule, is students need 22 credits to earn their diploma. So we have eight students that are pretty close, seven who are a little bit closer but a little bit further away, and then we have seven students who really aren't very close in terms of credits. And so each student has a different story that we're diving into. And then again, our commitment is to partner with Principal Reitz, Assistant Principal Jenny Sjostin, and to really dive in and say, what can we do across both of our programs to make sure that we help students with graduating? And then I put over here also, just so you know, 17 students, which I already talked about at the high school, 32 students that didn't graduate were part of our ALC, and then three students in our transition education center. So shifting to attendance, and people might think that's a weird coupling that I'm doing, but part of this is because people are talking about it a lot, and making sure that people understand what it means, but also that you understand that we're leaning into it and have continuously done that. So regular school attendance is essential for student success, and students who attend regularly, perform better academically, are more engaged, and are more likely to graduate on time, so there's one of the connections. The other piece is, as we think about intervening around attendance, the earlier we intervene, that really is the best way we can improve academic outcomes and reduce future academic struggles for students. So MDE releases each August something called consistent attendance, or you maybe have seen it called the chronic absenteeism, depending on its shift, shifted titles a little bit. And that data is released each August and it legs. So this August, we'll get the data from the class of, the school year of 23, 24. And that data is how many students, the percentage of students that were in school 90% of the time. And students have to have been enrolled with us for 50% or more. And so it is, right now, our district data is around, a little, between 70 and 71% of students have attended 90% of the time. I think it's important to know, that doesn't mean our daily attendance is 70%. That, really, our daily attendance is quite high, because that's what our principals look at all the time. This helps us track, how's that accumulation of absences really impacting our students? And so as we look at it, I just want to make sure that we understand, one, I'm gonna dive in, what that looks like for each level, but also that this is just one point of data, and it can be a little frustrating for our principals, because it's so lagging. It's good for us as a system, but what they see day in, day out, and they'll talk about that a little bit, and our support teams, that they really are looking, who are the kids right in front of me? And how do I make sure to positively impact that number and their experience? So consistent attendance data, that, the 70, between 70 and 71, it's 70 point something, and it's escaping me right now, was really from the class of the school year 22, 23. This August, 23, 24 will be released, and then 24, 25 would come out obviously next August. We do our best to recreate the calculation internally, but it is another, we're pretty good. Last, we predicted 22, 23, and each number was within 3%, but it does take some calculations, that some, frankly, if we can get close, it's just not worth the manpower, because it does take that to have to figure out who's been here how long. And we can look at different ways of looking at data, which really is what our data department partners with our principals on. So in this graph, 23, 24 is an estimate, as is 24, 25 to date, and the date was by the end of March that I was able to get. And so really, what I'm wanting to show is that each one of our schools have made significant improvement. 21, 22 was the first time that data has been publicly released for five years prior to that, and so it was a little bit of a shock for all of us that that was a way that people were tracking attendance. That being said, we worked really hard to increase that across the board. Our elementary saw a rebound faster than secondary, and you'll see that in a little bit. But then we keep asking more questions. So right now, it looks like maybe this year, from 23, 24, 24, 25, might take a little dip. So what's going on each school, each student, each situation? Because 90% attendance means students miss no more, if they start missing around 17 days of school, that's when they drop below 90%. And as you can imagine, if you have a student who maybe gets the flu or something else, and then you take a family vacation, it can be easy for people to accumulate that number of absences, and it's actually just the way life has collided for our families. Our secondary attendance for middle school and high school took a little bit longer to rebound, but I'm really excited about what we're seeing for, especially for this year. We did have a hunch that the split campus wasn't helping us in terms of attendance, and that really, I think that's one of the reasons that we're seeing such an increase right now at the high school. Ninth and 10th graders have the role models of 11th and 12th graders, and 11th and 12th graders really get to be at a school that they've already established a culture and excitement. South Campus was wonderful, but they also, 11th and 12th graders, if you've had your own, you know, get focused on what's next, and sometimes engaging in the culture at the high school isn't, it just doesn't come as easily. And so seeing that change is really exciting, and leaning in and saying, okay, but who are the other students who aren't attending at least 90% of the time? And how do we partner with families to understand the impact that can have? But also find out, is there something that we need to do better at school to make kids want to come to school more? So what are we doing? We are working really hard, we've streamlined our attendance recording procedures across our district, we did that last year. Each one of our buildings has teaming structure at each building. They examine monthly attendance data, as well as discuss individual students. And then we really work hard with our partnership with family and county resources when barriers to attendance continually persist. One thing that we, excuse me, realized is we needed to help families know, when do they send their students to school when they're maybe not feeling the best, but can still come to school? Especially since COVID, if you remember, if your kid even had a little tickle, we wanted everyone to stay home. And so how do we reset, this is when you can send students? So our student support team created this graphic, and it's been shared with families around, when do students stay home, and when can they come to school? Alright, I'm gonna have my friends join me now. So I have four representatives from across our system. Brian Morris, who's the principal at Lincoln Elementary. Ryan Clark, who's the associate principal at Mariner Middle School. Ally Losi, licensed social worker at Central Middle School. And then Russ Reitz, principal at the high school. And I have two questions that I want to prompt them with, so that they can share some things with you, and then they'll be up here to answer any questions that you might have at the end. Alright, you guys can decide who goes first, welcome. Can you share one strategy or approach your team has implemented this year that has positively impacted attendance rates, and what made it successful?
I would just say, excuse me, I'm Brian Morris, principal at Lincoln. Across our elementary schools, we automated parent communication for unexcused absences, so tiered levels of unexcused absences. And that has opened up a lot of time for us, right? Unexcused absences are what we use for communicating with the county also, that's what the county requires that we track. Sort of taking that direct communication and decision-making piece off our plate really allowed us to focus on more complex barrier, barriers. What is, what is keeping our kids at home? What do parents need to hear from us to know that their kids should be in school? That they, every day they miss is a missed opportunity to learn, and that our school is a safe and respectful environment. So yeah, this year really opening up that time for us to focus on the, the individuals around attendance has been huge.
At the high school, we really focused on two things. The first one was our theme to start the year, and it was around belonging. So we really encouraged our staff to be intentional about how they welcome students to their classroom. We armed them with different strategies, like four at the door, a top 20 strategy, as well as some relationship building activities early in the trimester, sorry, in the semester, to help our students feel more welcome and comfortable in the classroom. And then we were much more proactive. We have nine student supervisor hall monitors that are doing hallway sweeps, helping students get to school on time. We added a warning bell, so students know they have one minute to get to their classroom, which helped. We also were reactive. If a student misses two or more classes the previous day, they're met with by a student support specialist the following day, and goals are set, and parent phone calls are made in order to effort, in an effort to partner with parents of students who are absent. And then students that were on our radar for 10 or more absences in a week were brought forward to what we call our community connect teams. Those teams meet and collectively talk about different intervention strategies for helping students get to class. So those were the major initiatives this year around attendance at the high school.
Greetings. At Mariner, we believe a problem like attendance is a complex problem, requires a multifaceted approach. And so I'm gonna talk about two initiatives, one's have a bigger scale that touches all students, then one's kind of more of a dive down deeper and talk about specific students. Similar to Lincoln, we've automated our attendance letters, which gave us a really predictable cadence to when we communicate with families, allowing it to, the communication to be really proactive and predictable. And it, when parents understand the attendance pattern that needs to be interrupted early on, they can be proactive, and they can interrupt some of those attendance barriers before they become fully entrenched. We, we found that opening up that line of communication with families, it allowed us to create a partnership proactively, right? And kind of work together in that collaborative problem solving. Zeroing in on specific students, we also emphasized a sense of belonging. In fact, created a belonging committee comprised of teachers, counselors, and administrators that tried to zoom in on what causes a student to not feel belonging. And so we leveraged data from our DESA social emotional learning screener, and we, we zeroed in on students who told us through their self-report that they're not feeling connected at school, and had our counselors dive deep with students who felt the most disconnected, and found some really interesting things. By holding these empathy interviews, we not only validated those students' emotions and feelings about not feeling connected at school, but it really informed some of our practices as we strive to continue to foster building that, that community and that connectedness in middle school, which is of paramount importance, especially in middle school.
Thank you for letting me be here to speak. I was struggling to think of an answer to this question, because I think what you all are pointing out is attendance is a very complex thing, and it requires a lot of different systems at play. So it's not just one person that's doing the procedures, but we have our counselors, our administration, our attendance clerks, our technology, like all of those things have to be in play to have an efficient and effective attendance system. So Central's worked really hard the past couple years, really post-COVID, to create a system that's effective. And Central, I think, is unique, and maybe just middle school and in general, as opposed to high school, where we have, our students aren't being truant from our classes, roaming the building or things like that, but that they're not coming to school. So we really needed to figure out and partner with our families of what's happening, of why you can't come to school, and trying to do that early as well. So looking at their data and being able to just kind of plug and play interventions. So if you have this many absences, then you're meeting with a counselor, myself, a school social worker, and you're doing what we call an attendance success plan. So we're asking the student, what do you need from your teachers to feel more successful in the building? What do you need to do yourself? What are you responsible for? And then what can your family at home help you with? And then we share that with their families, talk a little bit more about, okay, this is what your child said. What are some things that you maybe would want to add? And then letting their teachers know too, so when that student does come in, they can say, I'm so happy to see you here today, it sounds like you talked with Ms. Losi about this, and here's some things that we can do in the classroom to help support you. School attendance, the number one factor with that is school connectedness. So another thing that we've done is started attendance group, and then in that group, we're helping the students meet some different student support service roles and different school staff members. So our principals coming to that attendance group, our student supervisors, our health office staff, our lunch supervisors. So then they can come, meet these people, have a personal connection with them, and then when they're in the building or in the lunchroom, they can say, hey, Mr. Kelly, I know you. And so, just to help them feel connected at school. So we've found a lot of success in some of those things, and being able to just have that efficient and accountable system.
Thank you. So I hope you're hearing that it really is a multifaceted approach, and that each one of our schools is, and levels are taking ownership around, how can we impact this? So it's a continuous area that we talk about, and so I asked each one of them to think about, just so you know, what's one challenge or area of growth each one of their teams is focusing on to further improve student attendance or graduation outcomes connecting to that beginning. For, anyone could talk about that, as graduation is graduating from our system. But maybe we'll go in reverse order, start with you, Ally?
Yeah, the one I thought of is reframing how families view county involvement. So counties become involved when a student is, has unexcused absences, and that's a very fear inducing thing, like being like, I don't want Washington or Ramsey County to be involved with my child, and thinking about like child protection and things like that. But that hasn't been the case with either counties. They really want to support the family, get down to the core of, why are you not coming to school? And be responsive and help that student. So maybe it's connecting with therapy services, if there's some mental health going on, county case management, maybe just needing more economic resources, connecting with medical assistance, any of those things. The county's been super helpful, so.
So that's one challenge of sometimes coming into those meetings, we have our, like, feeling more heightened or defensive when really they're here to support. And then one other thing that I thought of too is thinking about attendance as not just unexcused or unexcused or excused absences, but it's really just showing up and being in the building, no matter what the reason is, whether you're on vacation, whether you're sick, whether you're, can't get out of bed. We want our students in the building. That's where they're learning. That's where they're connecting with adults. That's where they're getting food, all resources, all of those things. So that's another barrier too of just seeing attendance for what it is.
Looking ahead, Mariner is focused on tackling timeliness of school arrival. We have a lot of students who show up late and it's very easy to look at what is outside of our locus of control, some of those barriers that, that we don't really have our hands on, right? That we, that feel just outside of our reach. And so we believe there are some positive gains to be made by improving our family communication and engagement. And then also kind of just shifting our mindset and shifting our focus to what we can control, right? The things at school, the connectedness, the, the warm welcome when a student does arrive. And then continuing to invest in our community and our, in the belonging culture that's currently existing at Mariner to help drive student success.
Sounds familiar. So we're really struggling with attendance first period. Our attendance numbers aren't great sixth period. And right now we're struggling a little bit around the lunch hour, which is fourth. So we are really looking at where are the trouble spots and how can we address, you know, students that are arriving ten or more minutes late to first hour? Those count as an absent, absence right now and many of those students end up showing up or arriving at some time. And so we're doing a lot of reteaching and of our expectations around first hour arrival. We're moving to a five-period day. We did a lot of listening to students. They asked for more time during passing time. So we're gonna honor that. They'll have eight minutes instead of six. I do think those two minutes will matter, just in what students need to take care of between class periods in terms of their attendance. And then we're, we're still looking for ways to improve attendance with our juniors and seniors, the students that drive to school every day and specifically those that drive later in the day. We have a lot of students that leave for nine sixteen or they're half-day PSEO. They might start their day at Century. And so we know we have a targeted audience there that may or may not return when they leave campus or when they're supposed to be arriving late to campus. So we are considering all of those factors and trying to improve our attendance rates for next year.
And I just think about two things that we've implemented, I don't know, two things that I think do make a difference and that we've been working on. One is really monitoring that ten percent absence, right? That tipping point of, of chronic absences, regardless of reason. I feel like, at least I personally have spent a lot of time focused on that, is it excused, is it unexcused? But if you're at Disneyland or if you are sick and mom calls in, if you're sick and dad calls in, it doesn't matter. Those are all days that you missed a day of important learning. So focusing on that ten percent, tracking that ten percent and reaching out to the parent. At the elementary level, those kids don't have the autonomy that our secondary level kids do. So it is a lot of work with the parents and it's not just harping at parents about calling in absences, right? It's, it's helping the parents understand that your school is a safe place, that your child is wanted there. Even, you know, something, something bad happens at school every so often, I will admit, you know, kid gets an elbow jab in the line and is upset and I talk to him or the social worker speaks with him. And if we can make contact with that parent before the child gets home, let them know what happened, let them know how we've resolved it. So that parent knows that, yeah, something, there's something when my child gets home today that I'm gonna hear about. It's not, wasn't a pleasant experience for my child, but these people care about my child. These people have things in place to help the experience improve for my child. There's less odds that that child is gonna say to mom the next morning or to dad the next morning, hey, I've got a stomach ache and I don't want to go in, right? So just working with those parents overall around their attendance, regardless of reason and helping them know that we care about their kids and their kids are safe and wanted in our school, I think, is what's gonna really help us in the long run.
Thank you very much. So as we move forward, really, we have some areas that we're focused on as a whole system. How do we continue to strengthen our internal processes? In particular, I'm looking at our students who maybe, you know, as our schools are doing all this, but what's our follow-up? Even if we had to drop them because they've had fifteen non-consecutive days of attendance, how do we stay connected to those families? Make sure kids end up in school and come, really wrap around them as a support? Because school comes sometimes after a while, feel like we're being a little scary and that isn't the intent at all. It really is to make sure kids are successful. What, I mentioned this already, how are we supporting new students to our system? In particular, when they come new to us in middle and high school, to make sure that they have the most resources for success. Looking at those non-graduates and I'm, like I mentioned already, working really real-time right now on this class, but how do we do that more closer to the graduation? So this year, class of 2025, when we know who hasn't walked across the stage, what does that look like? So that we are making sure that students stay connected to us as close as possible to that four-year rate, so that they earn their diplomas. Continuously looking at how we communicate with families and engagement. Attendance is one, especially at the elementary level, but families do take their kids on vacations. And, you know, we want to support that and don't want to be a clearinghouse for it. But it also can be hard sometimes when it is and we're looking at attendance and it is a student who also was sick or had other things going on. And so how do we really have that transparent partnership and communication? Because we, we want the same things. We want kids to be successful. And then finally, how are we aligning our supports across our whole system? And so you've heard each one of the representatives today talk about their own teams. We're also looking at our ALC programming and Jenny Sjostin will be here with me and Russ next at the work-study session to talk about, more about the ALC, but also really diving in and doing some program review. It's a wonderful school that's seeing a lot of success and are we really meeting the exact needs that we have in our system? And then constantly and continuously looking at credit recovery options. The high school added an option this year that really helped kids recover some of those credits that they missed. So what questions might you have for me or any one of our panel members?
Hey, do we have any questions? Ms. Strife, oh gee.
So, super exciting, the graduation rate itself. And also I really appreciate that you're digging in to the percentage in the kids that are not, you know, could say it's a great, it's a great rate. We're doing good and not really dig into who is it and you're going right down to the student level. So I really appreciate that. I love that you use the DESA data to make decisions, which is exactly what it's supposed to be used for and I love that you're doing that to help kids want to be at school. Allison, you mentioned something about what programming do we have that, or we have programming that kids can continue taking classes if they don't graduate? What, what is that programming?
So we have two. A lot of, our students can be in the area learning center until they're twenty-one years old and earning credits. And, and then we have the transition education center, which has, houses multiple programs. But it really is for students who receive support through special education or an individualized education plan and they have transition goals. And so they for, they forego their diploma and then end up graduating at the end of that time. And it always has been till twenty-one, at least as long as I can remember. And it was just extended to twenty-two for students' last legislative session, I believe.
That's all, the other comment I was gonna make was someone said about making sure they get a warm welcome when they arrive. And I've heard that also, when kids come and they're late, how they're treated matters with them wanting to be there. So thank you all for your, excellent.
Hi. Ms. Daniels.
Couple of questions I did appreciate too, all the graduation data and how you're digging into some of those students. And I would just say, all the graduations are so exciting. The big graduation that we used to have at Aldridge and that we're gonna have on our field, very exciting, many great, wonderful stories. Everybody has a story, right? And then if you get a chance to attend an ALC graduation, it's smaller and you, either the student is telling you their story or sometime a staff member is telling you their story. And it's just so wonderful to hear. And some kids have had to overcome lots of life before they graduate and it's very inspiring. And, and the transition education center graduation is the same way. So if anyone in the community or in the school board gets a chance to attend graduation, it's always very exciting. And then I just had something about attendance. And I wondered if the Bear Care Clinic has an impact on attendance or kids getting back to class faster? They have a sore throat, they go in, they don't have strep and they go back to class. And, you know, that kind of thing. Because we used to have, the only thing we really had was, well, if you're gone for three days, you have to prove that you're sick. And now we have that clinic right on site. So that's so exciting. And so I just wondered if you could comment.
Yeah, I don't have any concrete numbers, but we do see students using it more, specifically since the start of semester two. So I think it took a while for us to kind of gain traction. I do know that students are taking advantage of getting a immunization or a booster through the Bear Care Clinic. I know that athletes are getting their physicals done at the Bear Care Clinic. And these are normally appointments that would have to be made outside of the school day or during the school day. But not sure how to track it. I do think it's having an impact on getting our, keeping our students in school and then getting them back to class sooner.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Scott.
You mentioned that Madam Edi uses nine sixteen for transition in ALC, but we offer it here in-house. So I guess my question would be, is it because our size, school district is larger that we can afford to offer this? Is that the, the main driver for that?
I wouldn't, I don't know if that was the original driver. How I see it is we're making sure that we offer programs that meet the needs for our students. And some of our students, we've had an area learning center for as long as I've been here and many, many years prior to that. And so really making sure we can offer those, those supports for our students. So we partner quite heavily with nine sixteen. The closest area learning center that they have is on Century's campus. It's called Madam Edi ALC. And they really focus on seventeen, eighteen-year-olds who maybe are ready for more independence and it's on a college campus. Well, I think we can partner with them differently and we have kids here that we, we're the closest. And so how do we keep them in our district and how do we make sure that we're meeting their needs too? So in terms of the financial and why we did it, I think it is really to make sure we have programs that we house internally to really make sure we meet the needs of our students and families.
Have we ever thought of providing those services to Madam Edi as opposed to nine sixteen? As a, as a revenue generator?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. We could look into it, but not since I've been here, we haven't. I mean, you, we do have students that can come from different districts in terms of our area learning center, but I couldn't tell you how many specifically come from Madam Edi.
Yeah, it might be a way to get our enrollment numbers up. You mentioned SLED and nine percent of the students that are, need, need to take developmental classes, which is where it was before. So it's trending down. Where was it before?
Nineteen percent.
Nineteen percent. So that's a pretty, that's a pretty good decrease. And does that, because I know our test scores in math, science and reading have been declining. This, does, is there a correlation where we would say, well, those test scores are probably gonna go up because now we know nine, it's gone down from nineteen percent to nine percent? So we should see test scores go up?
That's for sure, our goal. What, what I think, and when I'm assuming when you say test scores declining, you're talking specifically about the MCAs?
Right, the report card.
Yep. So the MCAs, it's interesting at secondary, I actually was just asking students questions because I, part of it, we're wondering how serious students take those tests. And we have quite a few students and families choose to opt out. I'm still working on that data, but I will present that publicly here. And so I think we have an opportunity to really look at the ACT scores. We offer the pre-ACT in ninth and tenth grade and then eleventh grade is the ACT to see what correlation are we seeing there? If we're seeing students who, it's dropping for their developmental, I need to dive deeper into it. We're working on it right now around the ACT. So I think when I have that, I'll have more evidence to say, what is this looking like and how are we feeling about the test scores? Because we'll be able to compare those even back to 2018 when we had a higher rate of students needing developmental courses.
So the fact that parents have to pay for those developmental classes, and these are all colleges, this is not trade school, right?
No, some trade schools have it as well. It's, it's whether you're enrolled in a Minnesota college and that's part of the Minsku system. So some of the trade schools are as well.
So do we, do we have any responsibility back to these parents to say, okay, you know, your, your son or daughter graduated, we, they, they didn't, we didn't meet the expectations. So then do we pay for their developmental cla, classes?
No, because it really would be dependent on the schools, what's, you know, I, I, it's really hard to tell what determines that. But for example, Century, when students needed to take, we had higher numbers of students looking at literacy. We would say, okay, what's going on and how do we make sure we reduce it? But in terms of it's, it's major specific, school specific on why they're determining whether students have the entrance exam and need to have the developmental courses.
Do, do any school districts pay the parents back for the developmental classes?
No.
No? When you talked about interventions, like what's the most important intervention that you can do to incentivize students to graduate?
I'm gonna ask you guys what you think.
Well, I think first the conversation with the student. So we do a student interview, then a teacher interview and then a parent interview. Those are the first three steps into coming up with, with an intervention plan for that particular student. In some cases, we've had success with credit recovery online where students can test out of a class, you know, so they are able to acknowledge previous learning and then apply that to a course. They're moving through courses much quicker when they can do it a second time around online. And then we also have students that will work through summer school for credit recovery. And then obviously we have students that are doing credit recovery through our ALC. Those have been great ways of helping students that fall behind early in ninth or tenth grade get caught back up in eleventh or twelfth grade and graduate on time.
I think the other thing that is, which we, you know, talked about at our last work-study session, as we continue to expand those career pathways, having students see, okay, how does what I'm learning in high school connect to what I'm excited about or interested in after school? And then all the different real-life experiences we can provide for them. So even that day, I can't remember what it was called, the eleventh graders where they all were in the gym.
Junior takeover?
Yes. No, not the junior takeover. It was where we had so many community members and they were like simulating real life. They chose a,
test drive.
Thank you, test drive. To see that and see kids, like I had kids come up to me and be like, I can't afford my current life on my salary. You know, just stuff like that. So then I think however they're connecting in high school to what they're doing right now till later and realizing, you know, life, adulthood takes you on many different paths. So how do we prepare them for the twists and turns that'll come?
You know, now I'm gonna switch to attendance. Social media can be a double-edged sword. It can work with us and it usually works against us unfortunately. But do you see social media having an impact on attendance, especially with middle schoolers and high schoolers? You know, primarily the negative parts of social media. Does that come up at all as to why people wouldn't, why students wouldn't want to attend because something happened on social media?
I do think it comes up. I, what I would say is I've noticed a lot less of that as we've tightened our cell phone procedures. The middle schools have always had cell phones out of sight or, but then what Russ and the team have done at the high school, it seems like, what, what gets to me, which is really the big, big stuff, I have heard way less of that. But you guys, maybe, I'm sure it's still there.
I would say, maybe not specifically social media, but I can think about like technology. There, I have students that when they're not coming to school, maybe they're at home then playing video games all day or on technology or things like that. And part of my role is, and my student support team is educating the families of when that student can't be at school or is choosing not to come to school, kind of maintaining those routines at home as well. Because that makes it easier for them to then get up the next day and make it to school on time because they're not up late at night on video games or on technology and things like that.
Sure. I mean, maybe you should have them watch the George Carlin bit where he has, you know, showing up is ninety percent of success. Remember that quote? That might help. The other thing maybe, can we find parents if their kids don't show up? No, you don't have to answer that. We don't have finding authority. Anyways, thank you.
I don't really have any questions. Just thank you all for all the work that you've done. I'm very excited to see our graduation rates going up. And just to kind of comment on some of the social work aspects, as somebody who works in child protection services, I know why kids don't come to school sometimes. And saying a kid who stays at home and is playing video games, it's probably staying at home playing video games because there's a lot of other things in the home that are happening that are out of that child's control and the parents aren't able to control it, whether they have mental health issues at home, whether there's addiction in the home, poverty. Like there's all kinds of things. I see this every day. I, I am on some of those in another school district I work, or I work in Hennepin County, so I don't. in another school district I work, or I work in Hennepin County, so I don't intertwine my work with this role. But I'm in those meetings where we're talking about attendance, child protection cases that are happening. And while we can do everything we can do to provide a safe and welcoming environment for those kids to come here, we can't change what's happening in that home. It would be wonderful if we could. And I work with the families, so we do our best to try to help change those things, but sometimes you just, you can't do that. And Mental Health Month, right, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And so that is a big player in a lot of these cases, I would imagine, in our kids who are in that smaller number that we gave, who aren't graduating. And then when you take into consideration what we do at our ALC and our tech school, I mean, it's just fantastic work where we allow those kids. They might not be graduating and meeting it into that number, but they are graduating. And I think if we could like figure out that number and go, well, these were the ones who didn't graduate on time, but this is how many of them we were able to get to graduate at a later date would be wonderful. And then I had one more thing, but I think it's going away from my mind. Menopause, so we can go down. Jessica, but thank you all.
Yeah, so just a couple of small things. One, I love that the pre-ACT is available. My ninth grader took it this year. Is that something that we've done in the past?
Well, I thought it was the first year for ninth grade. We've always done tenth grade. I could be wrong.
I think we did ninth grade before too, maybe not since COVID, but I did ninth grade when I was back in yesteryear when I was a principal at North Oak.
It's hugely helpful because it was, it's able to give him a sense of, okay, here's where I'm at, right? So I love that. I'm glad that we're continuing that. Also, the communication that has coming out of the middle school, super effective. So I don't know if you've made changes from last, just last year alone, but I know when my kid is late to class. And so I really appreciate that it's, it's text messages, it's emails. I know that it's happening. And then the one question I have is specifically about connecting students with the counselors and social workers at the school. If kids know that they can go to you and they feel comfortable going to social workers and counselors, they're probably more likely to talk about these things, but I feel like sometimes kids don't know or don't think about that step. So what do you do in your buildings to encourage students to come talk to folks?
Yeah, I'm really proud of our team at Central, our counselors. Every sixth grader, they get to meet with their school counselor, and then in eighth grade as well, they meet with their school counselor to talk about and prepare for high school. And then what you were saying of kind of like how are we preparing people and wanting to graduate? Like our counselors are talking about that too with the kids. And so then when they go into the classrooms too and are doing lessons, saying, here's how you can reach your counselor, here's how you can, here's all of our student support staff, here's who the social worker is, the school psych is, so that we're really on the forefront of some extra support for students.
I'd echo a lot of the same ideas and say, we host some events that makes students feel really welcome. For example, elementary students are visiting their middle schools this week, right? Fifth grade students are coming to middle schools, and part of that is, is an introduction to who their counselor will be, broken down by alpha. And there's a few other events that lead up to the school year, like open house and, and things like that, that create the opportunity, the entrance ramp into a relationship with your counselor. Our counselors are also very involved in our Where Everybody Belongs program, if there was a theme for tonight, belonging, which is a longstanding program in our, in our middle schools that have had tremendous success. And so through the, through that programming, they are engaging with students, either with like back-to-school rallies with our, our sixth-grade-only first day of school, or through some of our advisory curriculum. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Daniels, that's a question that I would like to make to you.
Do the counseling staff loop in both middle school and high school? So they're with the students all three years or all four years in high school, right? So they really get to know that student and the families. And that's something I don't think you guys mentioned, but I think that was a change we made a few years back, and it really, I think, has such a great impact because you really do know. And then the other thing, when you have a fifteen-day drop, that student, if they come back into the community or come back to live with mom or dad or whatever, wherever they went and come back, they can like re-enroll, right? So what, they surface again in our community. So we want them back and we want them to re-enroll, right?
Absolutely, yep.
All right, Ms. Thompson.
I remembered. When it comes to the, I, I was a student who had to take some of those classes when I went to school because I barely graduated high school. And so I did, my parents weren't going to pay for me to go to college. That wasn't an option. And I think that's a lot, not an option for a lot of our students. It would be nice, but it just isn't how it works all the time. But just because I graduated, barely graduated, and was one of those students who could have been right on the edge, doesn't, didn't mean that I was a failure to the school system. The school system did everything they could, and they got me to pass that line, which got me that diploma, which allowed me to do so many things, because without that diploma, you have to fight to like, if you're going to get your GED. I have family members who unfortunately didn't graduate and never got the GED, right? And so they just go through life with that, like, oh my gosh, if somebody ever actually asks me, I don't have that, right? But I have this job I've been working at for thirty years and I'm doing fine in life. I just didn't make it past that line. So I don't want to think that all of our students who aren't graduating are somehow a failure to our district because they aren't. Because I did go to college eventually and graduated with honors as an adult, working, being on a school, like, so there is possibility. And it's just sometimes our life circumstances don't allow us to be super successful when we're in school and we're younger. But it doesn't mean we don't have the possibility to get there on our, you know. And a lot of times it was school staff and a teacher who made the difference in my life.
Yeah, and we can, we will share when we share more data. In the fall, we get our seven-year graduation rate as well. So for some students, and that is extremely high, has been for years, you know, they need a little bit more time for a lot of different reasons.
And I know it's because we have a lot of wonderful staff in our district, so thank you. Teacher Appreciation Week last week and just in general for everything you all do.
All right. I just have a couple of questions because I couldn't, I don't know what I had to say.
First, Mr. Morris, I like how you talked about it doesn't matter whether it's excused or unexcused, because my question was, how do I get an unexcused excuse? How does, does a parent have to call in? Is there any time when the parent calls in and said, you know, my son didn't want to come, just excuse it? I mean, how does, and how does that work? How do you determine excused or unexcused?
That's a, it's a hard thing, honestly. We do have a list in our policy of excused and unexcused. And then as, you know, even absences for illness, after they hit a certain threshold, we let the families know we really have to require a doctor's note. Or, you know, we do other support. So we may, a family may be really trying to excuse an absence and we have to mark it unexcused, but it is because we're held accountable to making sure we're educating students. And so like Ally was mentioning, how do we partner those two things? Because it can feel like then we're not part of the team, and then the county can get involved. And so it's nuanced and they're all really good at it, but there is gray that we work through.
Okay. And then my other thought was, if you have a student that misses first period every day, how does that, how does that work when you calculate your absentee's? I mean, is it overall? Because maybe they came to six out of seven or five out of six, how do you calculate your attendance rate?
I'll probably have to look into that for you, but we do period attendance at secondary. So those, those not attending first period impact us, but how it does, I'll need to double check because I'm, it's a-
Yeah, I was just curious because I, when I taught, I, I always struggled too to get my students to come. My driving students to show up for my first period, but I, I do agree with making that connection and greeting them at the door and knowing their names, knowing what's going on in their lives, and maybe you're on a first-name basis with their parent. And that seems to help, so. Thank you for all your hard work. I know we're not done yet. I know that you've got at least another month of things going on, so keep up the, the good work. And would you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next thing we have is discussion item D two, which is the first reading of our school board policy seven oh two, seven twenty, seven twenty-nine, and seven thirty-two. These policies have been reviewed by the policy committee, and they will come back to us on June ninth, twenty twenty-five, or, or another meeting if needed for a second reading. We constantly have our committee, they're constantly looking at our policies, making sure they're up to date, making sure that there's nothing that's changed in the law, and so they, they come that way. Seven oh two was accounting, seven twenty is vending machines, seven twenty-nine is Minnesota Post Insurance Debt Compliance, and seven thirty-two was credit card usage. Is any, any discussion, any questions about those?
Chair? Yes, Mr. Scott.
Who, who is the chair of this, the committee that reviews policy? Who is that?
Dr. Kazmicek?
Well, Kristen Angela are the board reps.
Okay.
There's not a, we don't have a chair.
Okay, so was there, this kind of gets back to the last board meeting. Was these changes, I mean, they look fairly minor, so I'm thinking they're just to true up to legislative changes and things like that, so.
Yeah, MSBA typically comes up with updates, and then we, we look at our policies and make modifications based on MSBA and legislative changes or language that we decide we, we want to change.
So was there anything in your, I looked at it, I didn't see anything material, but, I mean, does, do you, as the, I guess the lead, the lead person on this committee, do you see anything that was material in these? That's worth doubting?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I think these are all pretty mundane, most of them are pretty mundane changes, yeah.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
We all, these will come back like a letter date to vote on. We're up to now operational items E one, action on the student transportation vendor proposal. Mr. Wald.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the board, Dr. Kazmicek. We're here tonight to present recommendations for student transportation vendors for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year and beyond. With me tonight is our Director of Transportation, Mr. Dave Johnson. For many, many years, we refer to Dave as Safe Dave. He has a great handle on student safety in the school district, especially as it relates to student transportation. He is a thoughtful leader that way. He's been leading our transportation department the last year and a half or so. Also with us is Tom Watson. Tom is a former University of Minnesota Finance Director, Mayor of North Oaks, and he serves as a consultant to school districts in a very specialized area, student transportation contracts. There's not very many people in the state who do this and none who do it as well as Tom, so we're very thankful to have Tom with us.
Did you make that?
Yeah, I just turned it on. Thanks.
Thank you.
I got it before you did. The, there are several different classifications of school buses that school districts use, and so we will make reference to these class A, B, C, D buses as well as type three. And that can be very confusing, confusing to people who weren't living the world of student transportation regularly. So when I started in this role, I really had to, okay, when you say type C, what are you referring to? So put those images up here so you understand. Our class C and D buses are the big yellows that run our regular three tiers, three-tier routes in the morning, three-tier routes in the afternoon. Sometimes the type C vehicle might also be equipped with wheelchair lifts and be used for specialized transportation. We run many vans, the type threes that you see there, for specialized transportation as well. And when we presented to the board in March, we shared that we run a hybrid transportation system. The district runs some transportation services and contracts out for others. The diversity of that situation works well for the school district. Gives us some local expertise that we think is valuable as we work with contractors and families, and we route, provide all our own routing services. So we're not relying on people who don't live and work in our community to understand those, you know, best practice routing. First Student is our primary vendor, has been for several decades. Metro Transportation Network, you've maybe seen the buses at C M T N on the side, run a smaller number of buses for us. Type, type three, again, we have some hybrid services. We provide some van transportation, but mostly we contract out with six different providers and they're listed there. All of these contracts expire July thirtieth, and so it's important that we have been negotiating this process and this RFQ throughout the year. The procurement process was a very formalized process. Steps one, two, and three are primarily just defining the parameters, getting the word out to different vendors. So we get the best vendors submitting quotations. We wanted to have, you know, the very best at the table. We contacted some providers directly, in case they hadn't seen the posting. We did a public opening of the quotation, of the quotes in this room, about half the room full of, full of different vendors here. I'm curious how that went. After that, we interviewed directly with vendors, and were able to get what we think were the best prices available. And that brings us to tonight. We're making recommendation to the school board. At that formal opening in February, we had five full-service providers that submitted quotes. And we had twenty-one type three vendors. There are a lot of type three vendors out there, and, and many of them wanted, wanted work. In terms of the full service, those companies that provide the larger buses, there's not very many of them out there. And, and so we, we had just five that submitted. Key factors that we considered, you know, really about rates. Can they, can the vendor handle the volume that is required for a bigger school district like ours? What's their safety record? Are their buses in good shape? We review state records for inspections to see if, if the vendors were even worth talking to. Because if their, if their safety record was not good, we just excluded them from, from the interview process. Then again, those contractors we worked with, we had, you know, we, we had relationships with, and we knew what kind of performance level they provided. We knew what their strengths and weaknesses were, and then as well as, did they meet the criteria of the RFQ? So our recommendation for our C D routes, that's the big yellows, are the primary vendor would, we're recommending that First Student Incorporated continue on as our primary vendor. They were the most competitive, responsible bidder in the mix. They have a solid record with us. They have a terminal in our school district, which I think perhaps makes them more competitive in being able to start their buses right within the school district and not have to drive from Fridley or wherever to get the buses to White Bear Lake. And they, you know, they're a larger company. They have the capacity to handle the volume that we require. The agreement with First Student is at four hundred fifty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents for a route. That's an increase over where we're at now. Four and a half hours of route time handles the three-tier routes in the morning, three-tier routes in the afternoon. We negotiated a five-year agreement. They submitted a four-year proposal. We negotiated a fifth year with them, and statute allows us to negotiate up to ten years with them. Neither First Student nor the school district was really interested in, well, we would have been interested in negotiating up to ten with, for the right rate, but they wouldn't have been interested in talking about the rate we were. We don't know where the world would be in five years when it comes to student transportation, so I feel pretty good about locking in our prices for five years. With First Student, we pay the fuel cost, so the route, the rate that you see here is, does not include the cost of fuel. That comes to about thirty-two dollars a day on average for our buses. First Student is committed to keeping their fleet eight years or newer, which is about the same as our fleet. So that rate of four fifty-four, sixty-eight is a significant increase over our twenty-four, twenty-five rate of four sixteen, eighteen, and nine point two five percent. And this is where we're really glad we had Mr. Watson at our side here because the rate, the proposal came in at a seventeen percent increase, and you might remember that from the March presentation. And it was through a lot of meetings with them and some significant negotiating to get to that, bring from seventeen down to nine point two five percent. And then those rates, uh, uh, decrease as, uh, through the years to a six five four. And then we requested that we go a fifth rate of, a fifth year of three percent, they agreed to do that. And, uh, contract allows us to continue negotiating, then in that twenty-nine thirty year, you know, we can negotiate five more years, or it might be to our benefit to go for a, um, you know, for a public bid offering at that point. For the type three vendors, uh, recommendation, um, is that we go with the vendors listed in this slide. There's, is that six different, six different vendors? Um, they average three hundred fifteen dollars per route on the type threes, which is actually slightly less than we're paying this year. So this was to our benefit to negotiate though, uh, with the type threes, and again, thank you, Mr. Watson, for, um, for your skills as a negotiator, because we were able to get some vendors who were used to charging quite a bit more to drop their rates pretty significantly for us. Many of these vendors for the type threes have, have a niche. One thing we looked at was, do, do any of them have ten passenger vehicles? Not very many do. So we have a few that have ten passenger vehicles, or the universal, um, um, we looked at where they, where they start. So, um, oftentimes with the type threes, we're making calls trying to get coverage, because somebody didn't show up at one of the vendors, and so can we get coverage from another vendor? And so, we need some flexibility, we went with, um, providers that, the ones we've worked with before, we know have been really responsive. And the others, we, uh, gain that sense through our interview with them, and feel like we have a pretty strong group of vendors here for our type threes. Uh, it's only a two-year negotiation with the type threes, and so, within that contract, they've all agreed to match the CPI student formula increase, which is great, because typically vendors are looking for increases that are greater than what we get as a formula increase from the state, and, um, you can't continue to do that for very long. Okay, so it brings us to the recommendation, which is, um, the recommended action is to approve the agreements with the following transportation providers in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, as presented, uh, type C and D provider, First Student Incorporated, type three providers, Integrated, uh, Transportation, Northline Transportation, O'Day Transportation, Safe Tree, Treasured, and Universal Transit Services.
All right, you've heard the proposal, can I get a, a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Ellison, taking a second.
Second.
Second by Stripe O G. Okay, I'll, I'll open it for questions. Mr. Scott?
Maybe this is to, um, Mr., is it Dr. or Mr. Watson?
Mister was my father.
So what's the, you know, we have this, uh, five-year, five-year agreement proposed here. How does this compare with other districts of similar size? Is it, is it pretty much this, pretty much the same, um, as other districts similarly situated as us?
Good question. Um, just by comparison, American was listed on that list. Their proposal was five hundred ninety dollars a day. And so if you add the thirty-two dollar fuel, we are at four seventy-five. I only do two districts, up, work with two districts up in this neck of the woods. One of the, uh, competitors to the, to the west, uh, I do Monsieur's work as well. Both these contracts are virtually identical. And, and part of what we tried to do in, in this case with, uh, with these contracts, these are basically price agreements, is what they are. And the way the language in the law now was changed four years ago, that added that ten-year window. It's essentially, uh, the leverage we used, and, and I think that's what that, that section of law talks about. The vendor has to give you, has to agree to a set of prices for that term, whether it's four years, five years, or ten years. First Student wasn't willing to do that. We said, well, don't you wanna be in White Bear? I mean, you could give us a knock, a knock your socks off proposal, you know? Corporate, uh, they took everything to Corporate, which is in Cincinnati. And Corporate came back and said, this is the limit, we're not willing to go any further. The fact that they were here, um, we were satisfied that the prices were probably as good as we were gonna get. The big national firms that can work on districts, that command the kind of resources that you need to, to support transportation in this district, there aren't a lot of them anymore in the Twin Cities. Many of the big national firms have veiled out of the Twin Cities. Some of us are trying to work on that a little bit by inviting these contractors to talk now, even though the contracts may not expire for two, three, four more years. The problem is, when we go out in January and December, and we're gonna make a decision, uh, in May for that next school year, the lead time isn't sufficient for them to, you know, put their best face forward, figure out their resources, they gotta look for properties, et cetera, et cetera. They probably gotta invest in a lot of buses, and many of them can't do that. So, um, I thought we did pretty well, uh, with these, and the other thing I was just gonna say to Tim, um, and we've talked about that, we really did take a hard look at which vehicles and the prices involved were serving what services of the district. First Student, for example, was, was providing also type three vehicles, vans. They were charging you in the neighborhood of four hundred dollars a day. The, uh, common rate that we've got on three of these vendors is three fifteen, we got, you have two of them that are at two eighty-five. So if you quickly heard what I just said, that's about a hundred dollars a day. And as we know, I mean, I'm sure my friend over here can answer this question, but over the next week, um, legislators are gonna consider the governor's proposal, right? And the proposal has to do with transporting special needs children. This is probably as good as we're gonna get with protecting that, because as Tim and I talked many times, um, we are gonna be going to the board with an, with an answer, probably before the legislature adjourns. Well, we're mind readers, I guess. So we don't know quite what that means, but we took all of the type threes away from these high-cost vendors. And so the, uh, three fifteen vendors and the two eighty-five vendors, they are people that have been in the business for ten to twenty years. And their dom- their locations and their terminals are, and they're pretty much here in the north metro. So there isn't a lot of deadhead time, and, uh, so we're getting you, I think, a better, um, economic plan with that as well. So, I hope that, that's a long-winded answer to your question, I hope, but that's okay.
No, it, it answers, it was one of the criteria, one of the concerns I would have is, as these transportation companies exit Minnesota, for whatever reason, I don't know what the reasons are. You know, that's gonna put upward pressure on prices down the road, because there's less competition. So that's something, maybe in six years, we'll, we'll see. But, um, it, was there any consideration of looking at the, um, viability of, you know, the financial wherewithal of these? Was that a criteria? I mean, that they're well-capitalized, they're not thinly capitalized, that they have the, the, they're gonna last five years? They're not gonna exit, you know, in year three?
And in their requirements, they were, uh, gave us the assurance that we could speak to their bankers, their accountants, et cetera, and, and analyze that very answer to that question. We did not take that step, but rather referred to, to a lot of them with respect to experience, and where they're working, and how that investment's working, et cetera, et cetera, um, across the board on these candidates. And we limited ourselves to people that, uh, let me step back, there's two issues going on in this market right now. There are those providers who are brokering the services. They don't own a bus, they don't own a van. One of the criteria we used is the district would like to see the provider and the owner of that provider face-to-face in the district. Not some second, third party that's brokering.
Right.
Those arrangements, and I think we did pretty well with, with that. And the, uh, probably with respect to, uh, capitalization, I know most of these candidates, there isn't a single one of these candidates that we haven't, I haven't dealt with in this market, in another district. And so we've looked at them, uh, I know a lot about the school district's response to these folks. Universal Student, uh, Transit, for example, has been in the business twenty years. Integrated, for example, that's on the list, I happen to know a little bit about, they, they, it's an organization that was formed two years ago, but the principals have been in this market about fifteen years. They also have ten passenger and specialized safety vehicles, so, uh, children that act out in the vehicle and all those kinds of- So we got a lot of experience and knowledge, and hopefully I try to bring that to the district, and say, here, let me tell you about these particular folks. Remember, we had twenty-one proposals. We really worked hard with about eight or ten of them.
Have we ever had, uh, one of these companies, maybe in year two or year three, say, you know what, we gotta walk away from this? We're gonna walk away from this agreement? Cause it's, it's not good for us, and we're not making any money, so we exit, they just exit. Can they do that?
They, they could, um, serve notice, um, as the district could serve a notice on them as well, that, uh, they're, they're not interested in, in continuing that. Honest to goodness, uh, I haven't had that happen.
Okay, good, thank you.
Hit on.
Thanks.
All right, other questions?
I have just a comment, and this is just more of a personal comment, I just wanna shout out to Safety Dave and the training he does with the drivers and the aides, and I have a rel- relative that lives near me, and I often meet this child on the bus, and the drivers and the bus aide, it's a specialty student phenomenal. Just they know the student, they know the family, they know the dog, they know me, they know the uncles, the aunts, they know everybody, and they're so great, and I just have to say, I appreciate it so much, the safety and care, because it's such an important part of a student's day, getting to school, coming home, and for parents to feel that their child, whether it's a general and student, or somebody that has, is more vulnerable, to make sure they're delivered safely, and they have a ride safely. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
All of it, thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Well, we have the motion in front of us, this will be a roll call vote, will the clerk please call the roll?
Stripe O G?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcan?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
The second item we have today for operational item is E two. We're gonna take action on school board policies four one three, five one two, seven oh six, seven ten, seven eleven, and seven twelve. These came before the board for the first reading in April. See if we get him, uh, first, I'm gonna go ahead and ask, are there any questions? Can I get a motion to accept these board policies?
So moved.
By Thompson, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ellison, any further discussion? Hearing none. This will be a, a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries. All right, we're gonna go to board forum. It's now time, and, and for any board member that would like to share things, and I wanna give you an example, this is a time for us to talk about things that are going on, uh, in the buildings, or something's happening. For example, I'm just gonna lead with, uh, we are part of Ramsey County League of Local Governments. And any, and so anybody from White Bear Lake School System, you know, teachers, anybody can participate. Well, on May twenty-second, we are gonna have a karaoke night in Shoreview, that In Vino Verret- Verettis, do we think it was? And so, you, it starts from six and goes to eight, so I'm inviting everybody to our karaoke night. And we, once again, we're members of Ramsey County League of Local Governments, so those are the kinda things we could bring up during the forum. Anybody else have anything to share? Go ahead.
I was, uh, was a privilege to be a part of the Teacher of the Year interviews, and I just wanna shout out to all the teachers that were nominated, and, um, it's so inspiring, and I feel so grateful that we have the caliber and this love and the dedication of all the teachers in the district, whether they were part of that process or not, it's just a really uplifting thing. If any of you get a chance to be a part of that committee, please do so, you'll just come home and just feel like the best, and it was such an honor. Um, and I just wanna congratulate all the graduates coming up, and enjoy the summer, and be safe, and thanks to all the staff and families for a super year.
Okay. Mr. Scott?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that we're having our twenty-fifth annual White Bear Lake Area Education Foundation Golf Tournament on June sixteenth, it's at, uh, Oak Glen Golf Course. And your entry fee includes a lunch, green fee, golf cart, dinner, drink ticket, and a golf gift. And, uh, the board's been, uh, generous enough to be a copper green sponsor for this. So, um, and if people can attend, I, that would be great. Again, it's June sixteenth at Oak Glen, and check-ins at ten-thirty, tee-off, shotgun start at noon.
And I, I just wanna point out, we use our own individual funds, no school district money was to sponsor that, we all chipped in, so I wanted to make sure it was real clear, we didn't spend district funds for that. So, and thank you for all your work.
Thanks for that clarification.
Okay, Ms. Thompson?
Uh, just a point again about it being, you know, Mental Health Awareness Month. I know that there's a lot of people out there who may be struggling, just take care of yourself and know that, um, you, you know, get some help if you feel that you need it, or just talk to somebody. Anybody that you feel comfortable talking to and sharing can really make a difference. And so I hope everybody just continues to take care of themselves and each other, and just be aware. If you see someone struggling, maybe just ask them, you know, if they're having a good day, cause that, even just that can make a difference in someone's life.
Night of Jazz starts in three minutes over at the high school. If anybody, I'm gonna race over there to watch my kid, but this time of year, there's so many great concerts happening in the district, so if you have time, go check 'em out.
All right? Anybody had a chance? All right, well, we're gonna go to, uh, negotiations. This portion of the meeting may be closed to consider strategy for labor negotiations, including negotiation strategies, or developments, or discussions, and review of labor negotiation proposals, uh, conduct pursuant to Minnesota Statute one seven nine A point zero one to one seven nine A point two five. Uh, after we're done with that, we will just go ahead and adjourn, so, uh, you know, you don't have to wait around for us. Uh, so, uh, first thing I need for this is, can I get a motion to move into closed session?
So moved.
By Daniels, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, who? By Stripe O G? All right, we have that in front of us. Uh, this will be a voice vote, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? All right, we're gonna move into closed session, thank you everybody for coming tonight.